Tonight, we are here, joint meeting with the Board of Trustees and Planning Commission, to talk about the Northwest area plan. It's kind of a follow-up to last board meeting where we had some directional changes at the board level to not pursue code changes. So we're here tonight to have that discussion. And also, we got on the agenda work plans, and this kind of plays into work plans. I don't, beyond that, I don't really have any set agenda or set direction we should go, so I'll just let discussion be free-flowing, and each can jump in and talk about our concerns, thoughts as we go, and just let the discussion go from there.
So you started by saying that the decision was made, not to pursue code changes, but I didn't think a decision was made that night. Was there a decision made? Did I miss that? Or was it just conversation about it, and then let's postpone? So, if the decision was made, it seems like a decision's made. So where are we at? I don't recall. I thought it was just table to face it, more or less, but...
That would probably be the way.
Okay, that's cool.
So I guess my thought is, you guys kind of know where we stand, so maybe we'd like to hear more from you, maybe about the direction that you all would like to go, unless you have questions for us.
I'll start with my thoughts. And going back is to refresh my memory of where we were then, and where we ended up, and watched, I think, most of the video of all of the past meetings. And so, I think, in a nutshell, my view of it was, we entered, we agreed to go down the path of a Northwest sub-area plan to explore possibilities for that area, evaluate the issues, talk about ideas, and come up with a range of solutions. And I think what kind of stumped me and some of the board was that we didn't, I didn't feel like we heard a range of options. We heard an option, and that was code changes, and mandatory code changes. And there had, in watching these, in watching the replays, there had been reference to the idea that that would be kind of the biggest, the biggest step, the biggest hammer, and that we would like to see a range of options leading up to that, but not that be the only one, and that seemed to be the only one.
So I think that is the recommended option, but I do think that the proposal crafted kind of four options, you know, and one was kind of design guidelines, one was an incentive-based program, and then one was kind of the all-the-way-in, you know, to the code amendment. Based on the public meeting that we had at the end, you know, that was kind of, and I know that wasn't unanimous, but from the folks that were at the meeting that used the clickers, that was the selected option by the majority of the group. But I don't think that that negates, I don't think that takes those other options off the table. I think those other options still could have a place. I think that they still could be, you know, depends on what your goals are, what your outcomes you're looking for, but I think they potentially could result in, you know, some changes if the board's interested in exploring, interested in exploring as well.
Well, I'd like to say, I would like to not just discard all of this effort, this work, to do nothing. I think doing nothing would be a mistake. I think that, for me personally, I'd be more interested in having the conversation around these voluntary things that could be done to enhance some properties, maybe for non-performing, but enhance them, and just not a full code overlay of, you must now do this, because we're overlaying always happen, I think that feels too extreme.
Do you feel like you understand the overlay? And what, because I don't, I get, I mean, it was a recommendation, because we've not, we don't have an overlay district defined. It doesn't exist, and we're kind of making assumptions that we know what that is. We've not defined it yet. The next step was, do we want to go in that direction? I'm of the general opinion that design guidelines and voluntary things, don't be lost, don't be gone, don't be gone near. So, I'd be in favor of doing nothing before, just, I mean personally, because I just don't think that, you know, I'm not speaking for the planning commission, I just don't believe that. I've watched this town dance around guidelines and comprehensive plans and other documents that don't carry weight, so I'm less interested in that. But we've not even discussed an overlay district. Nobody really knows what it means. There was, there were some recommendations and some ideas about what could be put in an overlay district. There's also seems to be some idea that this is all about restrictions, and it's not. It's actually about enhancements, and it's about giving people who have ownership in town currently the ability to do some things in non-performing environments, you know, and improve that. It's talking about the accessory dwelling, which kind of came into play. There's some incentive-based, well, there's discussion, nothing, certainly haven't defined anything. There were discussions around, how do we allow current owners in town, properties, to be treated differently than a developer coming in and wanting to build six properties, or, right? Because right now, there's, if you're building the code, there's really not much of a review process. You come in, buy six lots, you know, build five Maple Street homes, right? Which is what prompted me to even bring this forward, is this could just become a neighborhood of huge homes, and that's what we're seeing all over the area, right? Very large homes. So, I have very little interest in saying, gee, it'd be nice if you do this, and here's some voluntary stuff that we think is cool. I'm not terribly interested in pursuing that, but if that's what the board wants to do, then that's your direction. But I don't think we've talked about overlay districts in any detail whatsoever.
What outcomes would you guys like to see? I think we should, I'm going to start there. Now, what are you guys interested in seeing?
Well, let me interject just quickly here before we go there. There's a disconnect for me, because we boil something down that's pretty large into saying that it's just code change, but for me and for the commission, I think it's larger than that. There are a lot more details, a lot more intricacies that are in play here than just an overlay district. We're talking about a small part of the town having an overlay district. We're also talking about enhancements to the rest of this Northwest area, including retail and further out, you know, RTD development, things like that. So, like I said, I want to reiterate, there's a disconnect for me, how we can just get to that piece and say, no, we don't want that, when there's much more to it than that. If that makes sense? So then, I think we need to move forward. Then, what would you like to see there? And what would your goal, and would you like to have old people, our commission? I think that's what you were asking, Lisa?
Yeah, I mean, I think, right, it's not just the old town, it's her original town, it's also the marketplace, and all of those elements, too. But yeah, I guess I'm curious as far as what outcomes, you know, you'd like to see.
What I was hoping to see through this process was an exploration of the issues, what are the issues, what are some possible things that could be done, and what do residents think, if anything? And if there was a desire to go down a route of code changes, that it would be something that would be embraced by residents, and especially those that had properties to develop. And you don't think that happened in the last two years? I think the outreach was there, I think the engagement was there, but I don't know that the willingness to proceed with code changes is there.
And then I missed something entirely, and I'll apologize then, because I saw, I mean, I was in the middle of it all, and I saw something totally different, but that's, if that's, and if that's the disconnect, then...
But I also want to say, that seems to be where the disconnect is, because that outreach was done with the residents, and engagement was done, and it seems like the residents and participants generally supported, were doing something similar to this.
So there's disconnect, not just in the community, but, and not just between the board and the planning commission, but even on the board itself. Like, so I went back, just like Clint did, I watched every single meeting that the board discussed this, and I didn't watch the planning commission meetings, and I know you guys...
Then you missed it all, because you missed everything. Seriously, you missed everything.
I think that's part of the disconnect, right? Is that, you know, so we were dealing with this periodically, right? We would have a meeting with you guys, and we'd get briefed on the work that you're doing, but then you're living and breathing this every single meeting that you guys are talking about this, right? And so as a result, things that, you know, became kind of like second nature to you guys because you were deep in the trenches, if you come and meet with us, and, you know, you're used to thinking about the marketplace, and thinking about, you know, original town, and, you know, potentially like an overlay district or something like that, and if our meeting only deals with one aspect of that, you know, there's the potential for us to miss a lot of it. But, you know, if you go back and watch kind of the chronology of the meetings, you know, we started this really in earnest back in like January of 2018, when Clarion was brought on board, we got a contract that was originally presented to us, and some of us on the board raised, you know, concerns about how exactly all this would work, and we said, you know, Superior's got multiple planned developments, we've got Rock Street Ranch that started from scratch and had a planned development, and we've got Superior Town Center which started from scratch, and we've got a planned development. But with Original Town, you know, we don't have a planned development, we've got an organically developed town that's been there for over 100 years, and, you know, there's unique challenges associated with that. And anytime that you're dealing with a situation involving somebody's property rights, and, you know, people start talking about zoning and land use changes, you know, people get concerned.
I'll be really clear, there have not been discussions about zoning. I've said that every time it's come up. There's nobody on the planning commission that supports zoning changes. We do not want to change zoning. I want the governors to know that, I want the support of it. I do not want zoning changes. So, I would really appreciate it if we're, nobody wants to change zoning. And yes, I know land use can affect it, but we're not changing zoning, and it's causing a lot of confusion, and it's causing a lot of people to be upset in this town, because they think we want to take away zoning or something. There's no desire to take away zoning. In fact, if anything, I want to see multifamily zoning improved, so that we can actually deal with small lots of multifamily zoning, because our multifamily zoning is designed for Rogers Farm in downtown. It's not designed to take four lots and put townhomes on them. They came forward with a plan, they couldn't even entertain it because it would require variances in it. But please, be cautious with that word.
I am cautious with that word, and this is the problem with it, right? So, we had this first contract presented to us from Clarion, and it talked about zoning, and it talked about land use code changes, right? So, you know, zoning was on our radar, and, you know, that raised the red flags with Kendra. She said, we need to actually go back and revise this contract, and so that's why we didn't execute that contract back in January of 2018. You know, we had an additional, you know, work session, and, you know, at that, at those meetings, you know, there was discussion on the board about, you know, what are we really doing here? Is this a comprehensive plan update, you know, an aspirational document that we're talking about, or is this going to be something that is, you know, actually implementable, something that's actionable? And, you know, there were some on the board that said, well, if this is a comprehensive plan update, I'm not really concerned, because that's an aspirational document, it's not something that you're enforcing anything to any private property owner. But then there were others who said, no. And Bob, you were very clear about this at this point, back in February and January, you wanted this thing to have teeth, you wanted this to be enforceable, but you also said, you know, zoning, to your credit, you said zoning was not on your radar, right? And so as a result, the contract that we got back in March of 2018 had zoning pulled out of it, right? Land use code pulled out of it. And that contract ended up getting passed, and, you know, there was talk about, you know, what the deliverables were going to be, and some of us expressed concerns about, we don't really know what we're going to be getting out of this. And then, you know, we next heard from the planning commission on this back in September, and that meeting basically entirely dealt with traffic and transportation issues associated with the marketplace, right? How are we going to reroute the roads in the marketplace? There was very little about Original Town, until we met with you guys with the new board in February, and all of a sudden, at the work session, and we heard, for the first time, discussion about a moratorium on development, on the implementation of an overlay district. And it caught everybody off guard. And so naturally, like, the board was just like, we need to pump the brakes here, and that was in conjunction with approving the work plan. So, you know, there, these were two ships passing in the night, in terms of, you know, what the board was expecting, what the planning commission was working on, and, you know, that's why it was important for us to just say, okay, let's hold off before we approve any work plan, and make sure that we truly understand what it is that you guys are doing, what it is that you guys are recommending, and we also need to make sure that the public understands, because if the public understands, we're not forcing any zoning changes on anybody's, you know, property, and that if you have property that you are using right now, and you're going to be able to continue to use it in the exact same manner that you always enjoyed, and there's not going to be any sort of, you know, prohibition on use, that's one thing, right? But if people hear, all of a sudden, there's going to be code changes, and there's going to be changes into like how property's going to be used, people get afraid about that. And so, I think it's totally appropriate for the board to, you know, pump the brakes and have this discussion before, you know, we go any further. And so that's kind of where we got to where we are. I mean, there was a disconnect, there was a misunderstanding, and, you know, as a result, like Kendra said, you know, we need to have executive session. We did talk with her, frankly, I don't think we have a true, you know, full, complete understanding as to like what we can and cannot do with respect to like overlay districts. I mean, I certainly don't feel comfortable with that, but that's where we are, and that's how we got to where we are.
I just, I feel like we've gone way far down the track. I mean, the planning commission minutes are in your pockets, you guys have put those, and did this not jump into anybody's attention over the last year?
I mean, I'm going to step in a little bit here, because unfortunately, you know, I mean, with all respect to Mark, this is Mark's impression of what happened. I'm going to say right now, planning commission, I think you did exactly what we asked you to do, and I have absolutely no problem with a single thing in it. I'm not saying we're going to implement everything, I'm not panicked that we're going to go out and rezone. I mean, the reality is, we can rezone if we want to. We want to. I mean, but you guys also haven't asked us to do it. So, I think there's a disconnect with some members of our board. This does not make me panic whatsoever. I mean, I think it's recommendations. I mean, there's two recommendations in there for the marketplace. We might do some of it, we might do part of it, we might do all, we don't know. So, when, you know, I spoke up the night that we were redoing your work plan, because I don't agree. I'm not freaking out about this. I may be the dissenting voice, but I think that the board at the time gave you very clear, okay, of what you could do, and you did it. Now, I don't know that everybody in town's going to agree with what we did, but before we move forward with things, obviously, we're going to ask the community. So, you know, I'm personally very sensitive that it's being sort of discussed, that the board is, you know, I don't want the planning commission in any way, shape, or form to know, to believe that I'm having a heart attack about this. I think it is a start, and we have to talk about what we think works and what doesn't work. I've read it through about five times, and I still don't see anything where we're talking about zoning and changing the use of anybody who's sitting on the piece of property right now.
And I think that's where, in reading through it, the piece that, I mean, there's a great summary slide here, I think it's slide 16 in the update deck, there, where it goes, what are the housing characteristics, what did you guys hear? And it says, reinforce the eclectic character of original town, support ADUs, utilize alleys as much as possible, and add consideration for scale slash height, desire to maintain flexibility. So the question is, okay, how are we implementing that? And then, you have the potential approach once you heard on how to actually implement it. The piece I'm missing is, I see the overlay district, but I think, Bob, you said it early on, we don't know what that means, and...
It's a thing to be developed. It's not a thing that we're going to go, here, sign this, let's put it, it has to be developed.
And without having that defined, I am having a hard time knowing what my role is here, because I don't want to tell you guys no, because I don't know what I'm saying no to, and meanwhile, I've also heard concerns from residents about their property rights being diminished, which I totally understand, but I don't know if that's what this does either. So, I don't know, I don't know. I hear what, I love the things that said, this is what we heard and what needs to be accomplished. I see that the overlay district could do that, but I still don't know what that does, so I don't know if I should or should not be against it. Because, I mean, Bob, I don't know if it enhances, like you're saying, or if what Mark says, it's diminishing, because it doesn't give us that detail. So, my question is, how does this process evolve from here to actually get us that detail? Because there's a lot of great stuff here, and I think the way we got here, because I went back and watched all the videos too, is there was concern about Original Town losing its character, that there was things getting knocked down, great homes getting built up, and it, I don't think there were a lot of people who were happy with that direction. So, doing nothing is a decision. So, do we want to continue down that path, or do we try to figure out what the best way is to enhance properties rather than taking things away? And I don't know if that's possible, I don't, I'm not an expert in this field, but that's the missing piece for me, and that's where I want to get to.
I mean, you can see what's happening in Original Town at the moment. I mean, there are three duplexes being built on Main Street, there's two new houses being built on Second Street, just south of the bridge, there's, was it seven, eight or nine lots next to the creek, which, there's an earth-moving piece of equipment down there at the moment. I mean, if we don't come up with a plan fairly shortly, it will be over before we get a plan.
So, let me just ask a question, so first, thank you for coming to me, thanks for having the dialogue. So, in your view, would an overlay district change the ability for those property owners to do what they've already done, which is all abused by right? The town is not permitted or granted any guarantees. So, in your view, would that change? Is there a desire to change that?
I don't really know enough about how the land use and zoning works at the moment, because I'm fairly new to this process, to really have a good answer to that.
I think the answer is maybe.
You can see from looking, you can see from looking at the slide that Ken quoted, what the desire is. I don't actually feel I know what the best way to get there is. There are some things that have surprised me, like the fact that Rogers Farm Development can apparently be built by right, with no review by the planning commission or the board. I mean, that just strikes me as strange, frankly. I mean, they're putting in more 22 houses or several acres, and...
So, just following that same, oh, that's the same question about that. So, in your view, would the overlay district change that?
I think that's certainly an area that would be worth looking at.
I mean, yes.
I mean, why, why are we making...
So, that's my, so, I just want to be clear, because I feel like, so I also, you know, we all watch lots of videos...
But I can't tell you what those changes are, but yes, there would be some impact on it. There would be some ability for...
So, I think as we think about, you know, we don't exactly know what has meant the specificity of an overlay district. The bottom line is, the overlay district would change the ability for those property owners to do what they have done historically.
I think the answer is maybe, for one. We haven't seen the plan...
Wait a minute, have done historically? Historically, is there?
Or could do, or recently, there?
There's no history here about this kind of development. There is no history.
I think they can build, they could still build a house. Could they still build a house quite as tall? Maybe, maybe not. Could they still build a house, you know, that's two stories straight up and a roof on top of that? I think some of the things we heard from the public were, you know what, maybe pull that second story in a little bit. And so those are the things where I say maybe. For one, I haven't seen the building permits, I don't know what they're building, maybe what they're building is perfectly appropriate, and took into account a lot of these recommendations and community feedback, and maybe everything would have happened anyway. But, and so I think that's where I say maybe. I think the ability to take away anybody's property rights to develop a single-family home of a reasonable size and scale for the neighborhood, we're not interested in that at all, and that's not what the community shared. Community doesn't want to remove those property rights from anybody else. I think that, I think what we heard from the community, or at least what was kind of fleshed out, or what we need to continue fleshing out, is, you know, what's the shape of that? You know, does it need to tweak slightly to relate better to the area, to keep that eclectic character, to have less impact on some of these smaller neighborhood homes, right, that have been here a long time? You know, we heard a lot, a lot of this is reaction from the Maple Street homes, and that's what you basically can do by right. That's a good study in what can be done by right on those lots. And so, if everybody's comfortable with that, then we don't need to do anything. But I think the community, over the last five years, we've all heard from a lot of people, that they're not interested in perpetuating that. So I think that's kind of where the finesse has to come in, through the, you know, community feedback of, you know, kind of what do you want to see? What are the things that are really important? You know, alley, kind of...
So, my perspective has been, basically, sorry, sorry, carry on. I think we all have the same objective, that we want to keep the overall character of original town. My viewpoint has been, I'd like to find a way to do that without providing additional regulations that do not exist today. Now, I'm hearing that from, if we, the creation of an aspirational document, or I don't love that phrase, of an aspirational document, but creating, for example, created incentives or some type of streamlined process, or some type of reduced permitting, all those things to me are of extreme interest. The concept of an overlay district where I am not having incentive-type programs or voluntary programs, but where I am changing the ability of those homeowners, those property owners, to do so, I'm personally, and I think I've been consistent with this, I'm not interested in approving.
So, those are in there, I mean, there's a discussion about incentives, and, I mean, that's all...
And I think incentives are fantastic, but what we heard is from you this evening is that you're not interested in an aspirational document, and if we want to...
No, I'm not, I'm not interested. I said I wasn't speaking for the planning commission. I am not interested in spending hours putting together documents that a developer can walk in here and will never see, well, they won't see it because they don't have to read it. They will go to the land use code, and they will present their design documents, they'll get them permitted, and they'll build. That's what they do, that's how it works. So, no, I don't, I mean, I don't really want to spend hours, only getting aspirational documents in there.
And for me, I'm no expert on here either, but if that same developer was to look at, you can, you could do this, but our permitting for doing something like that is going to be X, but if you could find a way to retain the value of the house, if you, you know, we understand that our zoning changes will not, that our current code might not allow for a wraparound porch, but we, you know, our planning commission has made it clear that we'll take exceptions for things like wraparound porches, and we'll allow variances around those setbacks. All those things to me are of extreme interest, but the concept of an overlay district, to me, which starts signaling zoning changes, and I think we're being a little...
So, I don't know that you could even do that without changing code to some degree. I think even if you embed incentives, they have to be, I don't think you could do that through a policy, right? Because then, and I, we'd have to check with Kendra and, you know, with your planning staff, but my understanding of kind of how code works...
Well, there's certainly variances that can be approved.
Right, but you'd probably have to change the criteria again, which would require amendments to the land use code. So even if we did incentive-based things, I think to talk about, we can't change the code at all, then I don't know that you're even going to be allowed with the possibility of doing something different.
So, let me say that those incentives were part of our discussion on an ongoing basis. So each time that we came together as a committee, we did talk about how do... So each time that we came together as a committee, we did talk about how do incentivize this. In addition, we wanted a document or some regulatory tool to say that there are limitations here, that when you come in and you ask to build something, that it fits the parameters set forth by our town, so that decisions don't seem so arbitrary as they come along. And we're not feeling like, as a commission and maybe as a town, that we're adding variances, you know, just unpredictably. Anyone who asks for one, an variance for something, will receive that. And that's what it kind of feels like, having a tool that doesn't have any backing or support.
So, the problem that I keep coming back to is, you know, when we started this process, and, you know, Bob, you said like zoning's not on our radar, and then, you know, a year later, we get a presentation and it's, we want a moratorium, or we want to explore a moratorium and then do this overlay district, which basically effectuates zoning changes through land use code changes. You know, that just to me is just, we're at opposite ends of where we started. And, you know, when going back and watching kind of the history of the discussion on the board, and, you know, I think Trustee Pennington was really clear that she thought that this was basically like a comprehensive plan update, and now we've got a new board, we've got three new members who weren't in the discussions of the original approval. So, you know, I just think we need to kind of understand, you know, what's the purpose of this project? And, you know, I, we said it from the very beginning, we don't want you to spend a lot of time, money, and effort on a project that is just an academic exercise that can't be used, right? And, you know, I don't want a comprehensive update, you know, to the comp plan that ends up not being followed and not implemented. But the point is, you know, I think we need, and we still need, you know, legal guidance as to, you know, what can and cannot be actually implemented here with an overlay district, because if we design an overlay district, but it's gonna constitute, you know, some sort of regulatory taking, and we're gonna get sued by private property owners, you know, we don't want that to happen. Secondly, let me finish, if we're gonna put in an overlay district and it's something that is unenforceable and property owners can just ignore it, that kind of defeats the purpose too. So, you know, I think we need to have these kind of, you know, fundamental questions answered as to, you know, what the effectiveness of this project will be before it makes sense to, you know, have anybody spend any additional time, money, and effort going down that path.
Agreed.
I think one of the objects of the exercise is actually to provide some protection for the people that live in our original town at the moment, because there's a lot of vacant lots in original town. And as the things stand, as far as I can tell, there's nothing to stop anybody coming in and building a Maple Street home right between two of those smaller, single-story houses. And, I mean, we actually, the two examples I quoted, if you look at the William Street development, there's three duplexes there that basically go out to within inches of the lot line, occupy the whole of that block. The people who did the two houses south of, on Second Street, actually have done very nice houses. They, I mean, I wouldn't exactly say that they fit in, but they fit in a lot better than the ones on William Street, so. And I mean, there's some possibility for, and that was apparently done voluntarily, so there's some possibility for a mix of you must and would you please.
So, Maple, you know, a lot of references to these Maple Street homes. So, as, as I recall how that whole thing played out, they, the owner of that development came to town board with a concept to do a very small plan development there.
Really cool.
And it did, it looked really cool. Got some, a little bit of pushback, and for whatever reason, they just said, okay, fine, we won't do that, we're just gonna build houses. And they built the maximum that would fit it.
There's a lot of history behind that, but it wasn't that simple, but there's a lot of history by the owner of that property and his history with the town.
Yes.
It isn't as simple as he got a little pushback. Guy's been pushed around and pushed back himself a lot, and he just probably decided.
I'm sorry, well, I'm not...
There's just so much...
I'm not, I'm not done with that. It's, I think what happened there with one owner building six to the max, I think that was kind of an anomaly. I just don't see that happening. And I don't think it played out quite like they thought it would. I've heard from the broker's side that they were not able to get the prices that they thought did. And so, it was, in hindsight, maybe they were built a little overbuilt for the, you know, the market, that was buying them, did not respond. And I think that the, you know, the market will kind of correct and guide people as to what to build. I mean, if an individual owner wants to build the maximum to fit on that envelope, that's, they're right. If someone is building something to sell, maybe they won't, because it's, it's got to be desirable in the marketplace and so on. And the similar thing played out on Rogers Farm. They came to us with an idea for a plan development, the board pushed back, and they said, okay, we're just gonna build on these lots that are plotted in nineteen oh four, and that's what they're doing. So, when we say we had, you know, we had no ability, yeah, we had the ability to affect that, and we had the ability to do the whole thing at once. And this previous board said, didn't in effect say no, but there was enough pushback where they said no, because time is money, and they're, you know, cannot keep coming back every three, four months with concept plans until, you know, so they just said, you know what, we need to proceed.
So, I guess to go kind of back to my original question, I feel like we're talking in circles a little bit, what outcomes is the board looking for? Right? Because then we can back into what our next step actions are, and I feel like that's kind of where we need to go. You know, we've been talking about this, we are where we are, where do we want to go from here?
Right. Well, and the question is, what do we really have to affect remaining? Yes, it's the empty lots?
The homes that have been taken.
Well, but could it not also be any lot that somebody sells and a property gets torn down on that could then be messed up? I mean, if you ask me what it is I want to get to, I want to make sure that we preserve what we have in original town. Maybe enhance it, you know, new little cool funky houses, but, you know, I don't think we can trust that just because Main Street didn't turn out perfect, that it won't happen again. If we don't have some sort of guidelines or aspirational documents related to original town, I, we'll just end up with a mess, and things will be completely out of control. So, for me, planning commission, I would like to have something in place that helps us maintain and enhance original town to meet with the expectations of the people who live there, but also the expectations of what we have as a town that we want original town to thrive. So, you know, and for me, I need to hear really, you know, and I read through the documents a lot about what the folks from original town want, and it's still a little bit nebulous for me as to what they want, because somebody lives in one part of town, a of original town, but I really don't want to see us not put some protections in for the folks who live there.
Sandy, you know, the statement was made, there aren't no regulations. There are regulations, I mean, we can't, you can't build a skyscraper there. I mean, there are site limits, there are setbacks. The question is, do we like those?
Yeah.
And do we want to change them?
And my response is...
That was exactly the question, that's exactly what we went out there, get asked and answered. And so, it's not instant answer to the satisfaction of the board, so we're all sitting here, I mean, we are truly just waiting for direction. So, I, if you guys can tell us what you want us to do, then we can decide what we want to do, and the community can do, because a lot of this was around, what does the community want? I started from the very beginning, I said, let's find out what the community wants. If they want to leave it as is, and we all want to be able to build those size homes, I'm okay with that, A okay with that, it's just not what we heard.
Well, and Sandy just said...
I was actually surprised, but that's not what we heard.
Well, Sandy just said the responses were kind of nebulous, they were all over the place, and I think that's...
I don't think so, I disagree with that. And I think we have data to show that.
Yeah, well, I mean, unfortunately, we have data...
If we don't like the data, then...
We have data to show, but we've also gotten, I just want to be clear, we've gotten some feedback that the process was not as...
Yes, we had a meeting with Buttons.
Right, and it's, right, it's, we were, when you're dependent upon technology, and when some of the technology doesn't work, that's tough. And then we presented data that, you know, we, I frankly, when I first presented the data, I didn't know the buttons didn't work until people started saying, oh, wait a minute.
One meeting, the buttons didn't work, and there were show of hands, so. So, that basically defeated a hundred fifty thousand dollars and...
I want to be careful that we're not, the work that was done is excellent, right? So, it is not, I don't want, I do not want to dismiss the good work from the consultant, the good work from the planning commission, members of the community that have spent their time, I think it is excellent. I'll, I think you guys know where I am, and I want to continue the dialogue, but where I'm currently thinking, so I'm not burying the lead here, is that, because we're talking a lot about original town and not necessarily about the, you know, the shopping center, which is, the work around the shopping center and the reconfiguration, that work is great, and I think we need to work with Bricksmore, and I'm very grateful to have the good work and thinking about how that's gonna be reconfigured, because Bricksmore needs our help. And let's just call it what it is, my view of Bricksmore needs our help. From the work that we have, I think it's an excellent report, I think it's really helpful data. Me, when I think about changing the current set of regulations to change those setbacks, to change those height requirements, it would be premature to do that, in my view.
We agree. I think we, before anything was changed, we would have to develop a set of regulations, people to react, to get more feedback, model that, demonstrate that, right? So, absolutely.
So, Kevin, you took the words right out of my mouth. When we began this process, we decided in the planning commission that we had to divide the two areas. We started with the northwest area as a whole, which we learned that most of the emphasis came back to original town, the housing and the development there. So, when we were able to separate the two, in my opinion, it's pretty good work around the redevelopment of the shopping center area, and that part I don't want to lose. So, here we are again, talking about our overall plan and having most of the focus being on original town housing. So, and there's some way for us to maybe formally separate those two, either the planning commission or if the board would ask us to look at those pieces individually and then move forward on each piece, then that might be helpful as well. And we'll, you know, take a lot of ambiguity out of, you know, the overall process and the plan. So, we're not talking about an overlay district for the redevelopment of the marketplace.
No.
The overlay district is for the original town and the residents.
And I agree, so on the, for the Bricksmore property, some other properties in there, which, you know, RTD and others, which I suppose is not Bricksmore, I think the work is great, and I'd like to see, I personally would like to see the planning commission continue that work, work with RTD. We're starting to think about, is there a pocket of affordable housing that we could be, that could be in there? I think that's all good work, and I think the planning commission should continue.
There's a lack of consensus on that, though. That's your opinion?
I understand.
I heard something totally different, Kevin, I, so, I heard frustration within, and maybe I missed something, but I...
On the marketplace, I think there was more consensus, I think that there were, you were...
I don't think any of us speak for the consensus of work, where this is a work session where we're trying to work things out, right? So, I definitely am not the appointed voice. I do want to be, in order to what I ever want to be, or any of you want me to be, more importantly. The overlay district, I think, my view, I'm grateful for the work, for the recommendation. I personally do not want to see the overlay, I do not recommend the overlay district be considered any further in the work plan for this year.
Do you want any other work related to original town?
Yeah.
Well, to clarify that, incentives, an incentive structure, I think that's sad...
Yeah, that's like all the other...
I just wanted to make sure I'm hearing what you were saying.
No.
So, that's Kevin's, sorry. I like, like Kevin, I'm not in favor of an overlay district. I think we do have regulations in place for height, for setbacks, for size, and in my view, have not heard a compelling consensus among the community that wants that changed. And so, I'm, I'm good leaving that alone. I am very interested to hear ideas around incentives and things that could be done to, if you want to put a porch on a non-conforming lot.
Even if that requires change to the code? Because to allow that...
How it gets done, I don't, I don't know how it gets done, that's another piece of this, but...
More options kind of thing?
Yeah. But I would be, Clint would be interested in hearing ideas surrounding, how can we enhance a property that maybe is, you know, it's not within the setbacks, but you could add a porch to make it look and feel nicer? Maybe you could, an ADU, I like the idea of ADUs, and things along those lines. So, yes, I think there should be, there could be further work done on those.
It will require code, I mean, ADUs for sure would require coaching.
But it does, but that's, that's to be, to be figured out, but that's, that's right.
Good. Yeah. So, just going down the list of what the actual recommendations were lumped in together was the overlay district and the incentives. I'm fully, like Clint, on board with the incentives. Without knowing what the overlay district is or actually does, I have a hard time saying no to it. I'm, I'm fine continuing to explore that. Where I get a little concerned is I don't know what that means as far as money goes. Do we need Clarion? Does the staff have the time to do this, the ability to do this? Are we gonna dump another hundred fifty thousand dollars into it and then find out it's too restrictive? It never would have had a chance, so until I have a better idea, saying, full board, let's go overlay district, that's where I'm missing. But I'm not against it in theory. Going down the line, ADUs, I'm absolutely in favor of. We're talking about affordability, we're talking about how do people continue to maintain their ability to live in Boulder County? ADUs is an important piece of that, I am fully on board with that. And then, the third recommendation you all had was a series of strategies slash community priorities, and I don't see any that jump out at me as negative, fear establishing a tree slash conservation program, exploring a potential grant slash loan program to encourage reinvestment in original town properties. I don't know what that means, that's another one I need to see a lot more detail around, but in theory, I'm not jumping out against it. Enhance pedestrian connections to the marketplace, absolutely. I, generally, I'm in favor of most of what's in here, I just need better details around what overlay means.
So, on the marketplace, I think the next step is to talk with Bricksmore and get their buy-in on what they think about this process, because if Bricksmore's not on board, there's no point going further, talking about how to redevelop their property. In conjunction with that, I agree, we should have Boulder County Housing Authority, RTD at the table to see if there are aspects of, you know, the affordable housing commitment, you know, that could be implemented along the RTD bus stop, along Thirty-Six. You know, maybe some appetite, at one point when we talked to Bricksmore, they said, you know, potentially redeveloping some of their smaller big boxes could be redeveloped at some point in time to be residential. So, you know, I think we need to have, you know, Bricksmore at the table. The concern that I raised at, whether it was the last meeting or the meeting before that about Bricksmore, is I'm really concerned about a project of this scope and magnitude kind of strangling all the businesses that are currently in place at the marketplace. And we heard about the drop-off in sales that they were suffering when the Diverging Diamond was being built. So, you know, I wouldn't want to see us undertake this process to redevelop, develop the marketplace and then put all the businesses that are currently in business, out of business, because the project's too big and nobody's shopping there anymore because it's a mess for years. So, you know, that's, that's a big variable here, right? You know, we could have this really nicely planned project, but the execution of it could end up kind of frustrating the whole purpose of it. So, I think, but I mean, obviously, that's kind of the calculated risk that Bricksmore would need to take really as the owner of the property, but also we need, you know, Costco's buy-in and Target's buy-in, because obviously they own the park... But also, we need Costco's buy-in and Target's buy-in because obviously, they own the parking lots that are involved. But, you know, in general, I agree that Bricksmore, that property is ripe for redevelopment, but it's something that we need to be really cautious in terms of how it's executed. And frankly, I don't know how it successfully will get pulled off without putting some businesses out of business. On Original Town, I don't have enough information right now as to what the overlay district would look like and do, whether it would be enforceable. And so if somebody, an existing property owner with existing property rights, doesn't like it and wants to continue to carry on with their current rights, I need to understand if they would be allowed to do so or not, right? If they're forced into this new overlaying zoning that we're replacing on them, you know, that's one thing. If there's exceptions and they can get out of it, that's another thing. So I think before we kind of proceed any further, I really need to fully understand kind of like what the legal consequences are to existing property owners in terms of making changes going forward once an overlay district was implemented. And really, what we're talking about with what an overlay district would be, right? If it's these minor designs that are saying like, okay, you can have, you know, the setbacks are going to change, and you can have porches, and you can have kind of these minor tweaks, that's one thing. If you're saying like, you used to be able to build a two-story house, and now you can only build a one-story house, you can only build a certain amount of square footage on a lot, that's a different story altogether. So I guess I need to understand before we're going down that path, really, what's the intent of this program? But, I mean, that's where I am on this whole thing. So I'm open to considering things, but right now, I'm not interested in like a moratorium. And I'm certainly not interested in doing an overlay district unless the community really knows what it will do. And I want the whole community to actually buy into that project. So like if Original Town says, okay, this is great, now I can put in accessory dwelling units. I used to not be able to do that, and I could put on a front porch, and I used to not be able to do that. That's one thing. If it's, I used to be able to do, you know, XYZ with my property, and now I can't do it, that needs to be communicated also. And then only after the community understands and the board fully understands what we're talking about, would I be prepared to actually like go forward and give guidance one way or the other. So I'm open to continue the discussion about it, but I want us really to formulate, you know, the specifics as to what we actually have in mind for this overlay district. But I also don't like, just like, this is the only way we're going to proceed, you know? If the, because I do agree with Kevin and Clint that, you know, this, Clarion's done great work. The planning commission's done great work. You know, I certainly don't want to just like throw this out, right? Like, there's a lot of thought that's been put into it, a lot of hours, a lot of work. And there's a lot of really good ideas here. But we just need to make sure that we're communicating what those ideas are and the conclusions that we're drawing from and giving the board and the town options before we're kind of scaring everybody and saying like, okay, now we're proceeding with this new zoning designation. And all of a sudden, people get freaked out about what their property buyers are going to do.
I agree.
Yeah. So let me start with the marketplace, because I think the work, and I said this in February, I think the work that was done is phenomenal. You know, I looked it up. Bricksmore has 425 retail centers across the country and 75 million square feet under management. We are a belligerent, under P and L at best. They don't care about vacancies. I mean, they do, but just not to the same degree that we do. And the work that was done here is a kick in the pants that we needed to kind of bring them to the table to start the conversation. But let's be honest, anything we do there is a 10- to 15-year process. If you look at what's happened with Broomfield and where Great Indoors and Best Buy were, that's a 2-year redevelopment process. So I am absolutely worried about our current tenants and any sort of impact that they're going to see in any sort of redevelopment. But I also know that this is not going to happen, and it's not a two-year plan. So with respect to everything that the planning commission has done, there's three scopes of work. You know, we're going to move on a very different timeline. The marketplace to me is, we just keep working on that, but don't expect anything to happen overnight. You know, the RTD redevelopment there too, you know, we've heard, you already heard from everybody else, I think we want to keep going in that direction. That again, also takes some time. You know, I think the work that's been done here is phenomenal. Without it, we couldn't even have a conversation with Bricksmore. You know, just kind of yelling like, hey, come on over here and help us out. The demographics are critical, the fact that, you know, what kind of incomes we have, the relative age of our residents, all that stuff. We had to bring that to them. And I think that was just a great piece of work. Now, with Original Town, you know, I went back, did what everybody else did, looked at all the videos. You know, it was in January of 2018, when this was last year, when someone did float the idea of a potential moratorium. Didn't happen, the board didn't take it up. And as we all look back over the last 12, 15 months, like, well, maybe we should have thought about that. You know, and I think what we're seeing and hearing, what I'm hearing, is we just, we have, what we're trying to do is design something that works great for everybody. People who live there now want to preserve their character and the potential person who's coming in tomorrow. And I think we're all struggling with how do you develop a single set of guidelines that works for the people that are there today, want to stay there, want to preserve the character, and the potential of somebody that comes in and does a Maple Street thing that misses the market, which we may not be able to control, or Rogers Farm, where you just chose not to do anything. I personally believe that the overlay district idea is a great direction to go in. I looked at everything that the planning commission presented the last few months as options for us to pursue, but not end-all, be-all's. You know, the overlay district to me was a set of possible options for us to pursue. And I am absolutely interested in pursuing them and understanding the degrees of freedom that current residents will have under those guidelines or those incentives. If it does mean some potential code changes, how do you grandfather that in for existing owners? I'm absolutely willing to agree with that. I never saw this as, you know, an absolute recommendation that people are going to do. This is what the starting point is. It's just a question of, given that this has taken 15, 18 months to get here, and nothing against the planning commission, it takes time. What else might change while we're waiting? Obviously, if we could go back and hit the time machine and go back, maybe moratorium, a temporary moratorium would have helped, but it may not have done anything. But, you know, I think this is a phenomenal amount of work. And I honestly feel that for the entire town sphere, this is not an Original Town, you know, in a vacuum issue. I think we all are going to live with the consequences of do nothing. If we sit back and say, you know what, we're just going to literally put everything that's been done in the last 18 months and do nothing with it, we will end up with a town that does not look the way that we want it to. We're going to end up with mini mansions next to smaller houses, next to giant mansions, and we're going to sit back and say, how does that happen? You know, I think it's something we've got to be realistic. Do nothing is a choice. You know, the consequences will be probably felt for years.
How about ADUs?
I'm all on board with ADUs. We heard it with the housing community last week. I think ADUs are a great and easy way to help increase affordable housing.
Sandy used to go earlier, but you want to summarize it.
Yeah, I'm pretty similar to Neil. I think the concept of the overlay district and some potential design standards are, right now, it's a concept. We don't have, I think we, you know, and when I said nebulous, I think what we were trying to do was get to a general position. And now we need to talk more with the residents of Original Town and become more concrete about what it is they want in their neighborhood. And so, you know, I apologize, that was probably a poor choice of word. But at this point, I think we want to talk more to the residents there because they, and really talk to them. Because we've had some meetings where, you know, we may have had other populations, and I really want to hear more about what do they want to have happen next to them. So I'm open to it. I appreciate where some of my colleagues are coming from, that we don't know what we can do legally and what we can do and what we do want to do and what we don't. But until you come back with some ideas, I don't really have anything to say yes or no. You know, as Kendra would say, you can throw anything up in the air, and I can then tell you whether you can do it or not, or whether I advise you to do it or not. And then sometimes, we have to make a decision whether it's the right risk. So, you know, I would like to hear more about it because I really want to protect Original Town. So, and then as far as the standards and incentives, I would like to see us try and move forward with some of those sooner rather than later because I think they could help our current residents enhance what they have and be able to make their homes more of what they might like them to be. As far as the marketplace recommendations, I think they build very nicely on what we heard from the Urban Land Institute four years ago. And that, you know, we knew at the time that most of that work was going to rely on Bricksmore saying, yep, we think it's okay. So I have a very strong concern about us doing anything to the roads there that in any way disrupts the retailers there. They suffered for a long time while we did the diversion down and some of the traffic changes and the patterns. So I don't have a lot of comfort with things that would hurt them right now unless they all said, yeah, 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 we really want you to do that right now, we'll suffer through it. I'm not sure we would hear that, but I agree, we, you know, my sense is, from the conversations we've had with Bricksmore, they're open. They like some of the ideas we've talked about, about creating areas where people want to come and gather as opposed to come in and shop and go away. So I think this, I think there's lots of stuff in here that we should aspire to. And I compliment you guys on the work. I think it was a hard, heartfelt battle to get where you've gotten, and we may need to do some more tweaks. But I'm comfortable with what's there. And I say, let's, you know, tell us what you want to do next, based on what you've heard here, and keep us in the loop because maybe that's the biggest problem is that, you know, we haven't stayed as engaged as we could have along the way. I mean, I certainly have, but I attended a lot of the meetings and stuff. So, you know, and everybody can't. That was just my choice to do that. So, you know, I would like to see you move forward, trying to do some of the way in Original Town. But I think we need more engagement with our residents.
Question for Pat. We're going to be with the contract with Clarion. And any further work that they've got planned or where?
Well, the work's on hold right now until we have this meeting tonight and try to figure out what the next steps are. So we'll need to go back and Steve and I, Martin, and talk to Clarion and work. Based on the comments we're made tonight and the planning commission and see what the next steps are. May I involve Clarion or may not?
Yep.
Is there budget left? We haven't spent our budget?
We spent $147,000.
Okay, so yes. No budget left.
Yeah, we're very close, so.
Well, I'm hearing range, you know, everything kind of from no to yes, and a lot of it...
To be clear, so my no is that, no, I'm not interested in incentive programs. My no is this relates to the good work that I think the planning commission should focus on for the balance of the year. Let's be realistic, there's seven months left in the year, right? So we still have not approved the work plan. So I think about a work plan, I do not want to waste your time with things that I think you're going to do that are not the board's firm. And so I think if you spend a lot of time thinking about voluntary programs and put it in front of the board this year or early next, I think you're going to get the same response, which is, we're not interested. It was a mess, and I think we'll be wasting your time. So I don't want to waste your time again. Not that I think we wasted your time, I think the good work...
I appreciate you being honest.
I think you did really good work. I just want you to focus where, you know, you guys are, you know, we're all really volunteers, but, you know, these big jukebox, you guys are entire volunteers. And we got a lot of work to do across the street with the applications that are coming. We got a lot of good work that's coming, there are a lot of good ideas that are coming out of Bricksmore. Hopefully, there are people that are hearing about our desire to consider variances. But if there's a full-on program, and you guys were spending hours thinking about different new much proposed incentives programs that you could add to our code as proposals to the code, I think the board's going to come back and say no, and we were wasting your time. That's why I personally am not supportive of doing this.
You raise a good point about the workload. There is a tremendous amount of volume coming from over there. And the work with redeveloping the marketplace. And if I had to say, you know, where should time be spent, it's that development proposals that come in need your full and immediate attention and expertise. And then the marketplace also is the time, isn't the essence there? So I...
Sure. I think with the marketplace, you know, when we went through the kind of the next steps, planning commission wasn't really, there wasn't really a lot for planning commission to do for next steps. So I feel like that was mostly staff, working with RTD and Bricksmore, and, you know, setting up meetings in SEDA, talking about devolution. So I don't know how much time marketplace is going to occupy for planning commission over the next year. I feel like that's kind of, it's kind of gone beyond us. But I hear you on the other thing, and I would kind of look to staff's workload in your conversations with Matt, you know, as far as from planning commission's perspective. I think I personally am happy to continue to devote hours if it's going to be worth every piece of time and if staff can accommodate workload, or if we could dedicate additional funds to continue working with qualified consultants. But I think in all reality, you know, I don't want to continue being frustrated, nor do you, and we want to schedule meetings that we just talk circles through.
I know, I certainly don't want to, in my will, do that. We know that we come up with something, and we're going to get a no when we bring it back to the board. That just doesn't make sense at all.
But I guess I don't understand why we absolutely think we're going to give you a no.
We just heard that.
Yeah, well, Kevin says he's going to give you a no, but I haven't said I'm going to give you a no. Neil said he was open. It sounded like Mark was open.
When we speak as the respective board, the board's going to say no, is what I heard. So, I mean...
I don't know, that's why I just want to...
He has influence on the board.
So Anthony, what I was going to clarify my comment around the fact that I'm not, I'm not not supportive. I know that's a little negative, but I want to be clear on that. I'm not not supportive of incentive programs, right? I'm not not supportive of making tweaks around the code so somebody's window isn't three feet away somebody else's window if there's a screw up in how we do setbacks, when there's alleys or whatever. I think all those things are good ideas. I just know what's coming, and I think you guys know what's coming too. And I just want to be realistic about proposed changes. Your workload, proposed changes, I don't have a crystal ball. I just personally have not seen where you guys are going to propose a code change because it would be, I don't want to hear a lot of interest in creating big aspirational documents, so presumably, there would be a code change. If there's a proposed code change and it is not accepted by the board, I don't like the idea of wasting years' time. Now, if there's appetite for the board to adopt something like that, I think that's great. But personally, I know what, you know, we all know what's coming. And that's where, if I was prioritizing five things for the planning commission, I'm not sure that thinking about tweaks around setbacks or some cash incentive program for developers would make my top four.
So I've got a suggestion for at least the kind of Original Town portion of it. Really, before I feel comfortable saying I'm interested or not interested, what I'd really like to have is a memo from Kendra expressly looking into what can and cannot be done. Because, you know, zoning is supposed to, you know, it's static until it's not, right? You know, neighborhoods change over time, and then you can relook and address the realities of how things have kind of infilled and changed over time. And you say, okay, you know, this used to be farmland, but now it's single-family homes. So maybe we need to adjust the zoning map and make it reflect the reality of how the neighborhood has changed over time, right? You know, and you also need to do it comprehensively, holistically, not... You know, and, and you also need to do it comprehensively, holistically, not on a kind of parcel-by-parcel basis. I think it would be helpful to kind of just understand what that would look like if we wanted to actually do an overlay district and, you know, what we could and could not do. And then also specifically with, with code changes, I mean, you know, it's one thing, it's not like we're rewriting the entirety of our land use code if we're just adding a section that says, you want to have porches, you can have porches in this particular zone. You know, that, that to me, there are, there are kind of easy fixes and then there are really big projects that require a lot of careful kind of thought. So, I would like to have a better understanding about the full like menu of options that you could implement and then an assessment from council as to, you know, what's permissible and what's not permissible, kind of before I, I feel comfortable giving the planning commission any more guidance as to what I potentially could be interested in. You know, the general idea of telling somebody that they can't do something with their property that they can do right now, I'm generally not interested in that. But no, I want to preserve people's property rights, but I'm open to giving people more rights to do things that they're right now not allowed to do. So, I think we need to explore that, but I think we need to explore it kind of fully with legal counsel as to how, how exactly that would be implemented. I think we could probably implement it in different ways, right? You can do it with code changes on a kind of little code change basis like, okay, this house is now allowed to have accessory dwelling units, or you could do it on a zoning map change and kind of redefine zone districts, so. But that's something that I really defer to Kendra and her expertise before I feel like I can make an informed decision on that.
I would ask if, if we're going to have council look into that, that we engage Clarion at least a little bit more because they have done this before. I don't think it's a question of whether we're allowed to do it, I think it's a question of what the risk is if we do it.
And how?
And how we do it. And I would be interested in having council present options, you know, what's, what's legally permissible and then what are our risks if we do one thing or the other. We know that towns make code changes, we know that that can be done, I'd really rather not go say can we do it or can we not. And so, I would ask respectfully that if we're going to ask, we, we know this has been done, how can it be done, what are our risks if we do it and so that we can make an informed decision about the risk, right? Because I don't think any of us want to be faced with lawsuits because we, we made an incorrect change.
No, absolutely not. And Clarion, I think, can speak to that, they just built an overlay district for the town of Lafayette, you know.
We wouldn't have gone here if we weren't guided by, by consultants, so we all trusted and hired and, and are well-known in the community, so I just want to be respectful that, you know, we believe we've been providing good guidance, so just want to be thoughtful when we ask council about how we do this and how we want to present it back to us.
I'd like to see more work, like Mark said, I want to see more of an actual plan of what happens next. ADUs seems to be something most of us were agreeing on. I mean, there's general agreement on a lot of things and then asking for concrete on others. Looking at actual workload, I mean, if I'm doing my math correctly, you guys have sixteen or seventeen meetings left in the year. We have six applications listed on our publicly available development application status page, so, I mean, there's, there's at least ten meetings there that you guys can still fill with whatever priority is. I still think that doing something in original town is a priority. I don't think we've heard what that, what that exact is, but I think that's what you guys work on over the next few year, or next few months and that's how we get to. And I want to make sure staff has good input because you guys, A, are going to have to implement this, I don't know if we have the ability to do it in-house, time, whatever, and.
It's something we need to discuss.
And what the budget is. So, before you guys do a ton of work, I want to make sure.
And I think I would want to say from the planning commission's perspective, collectively, we will need either a lot of support from staff or the help of a consultant in order to move this forward in an effective and an efficient way that is, you know, so, I don't, I mean, if, if there's not staff time or there's not interest in, you know, engaging a consultant, I would recommend that you guys pause, that'll take planning commission alone.
I agree, there's, there's a lot of details.
But to keep in mind that we are in an extremely high development time. The reason I started this two years ago is because I was worried two years ago and I'm really, really worried now, but, and we are continuing to build seven hundred to one-point-two million dollar homes, you know, sitting in original town and, and maybe that's what we want. And again, I'm, I'm okay, I mean, I'll do really well, but please just put away the things the way they are. I had to dump a lot, so did a lot of other people. I mean, the idea here was, how do we figure out a balance in there where, you know, we don't dramatically impact our property rights, but we also don't end up with these, you know, situations where we're just shadowed, right, by massive homes on either side of a, of a small home, right? There's no development guidelines here, there's no, I mean, nobody's thought through what could happen to, to be in original town and that's what we're trying to do, right? And, and I also believe that the community has expressed interest in it. So, I would recommend pausing, I think you pause, you know, you, you, you signed a death warrant for original town, we're just going to, we're just going to start, people are just going to come in and build. And they're already going around asking people to buy lots and so that can get done. They want to get it, you know, and it's, yeah, this, this seems to be the time to build it, so if we let it go, then we're probably letting it go, which, I, that's my opinion, so. I do have one other comment, you mentioned.
Let me just interject before you move on. In regards to original town, I agree, I think we put that on hold. I think that we've heard enough from the businesses over in the marketplace that they're struggling and that they would like some help. The planning commission has identified with help of, of the consultants some ideas to help improve flow through there. And I really, you know, would like to throw that out, not see those lost or put on hold because, you know, I understand that a big redevelopment is, is going to probably disrupt businesses over there. Businesses are already struggling and they're not going to, you know, unless there's some intervention by us to help assist with traffic flow and pedestrian flow. And there's some very, very unique ways to get people in and out of the marketplace. And we've heard that maybe something as simple as putting in a write-in term into this first part of the marketplace might be very helpful to push business and push traffic through that area. Some additional signage, you know, really simple things that are not very expensive, cost-effective, but that can really help those businesses out right now, which I, while we try and hassle this out.
I think the hard part there is still, I mean, we can talk about the original town because we can, more or less without having to go developer, control what occurs as far as changes in original town. We have to go to Bricksmore to, to do any of these changes that are with the marketplace and I think that's what's occurred. So, I just don't know what additional steps planning commission could take right now because every, every great idea you guys throw at us, and there's been a ton of them is awesome, let's bring it to Bricksmore and let's start working on this, but, but until they buy in, until they start moving on it, I don't want you guys to spin your wheels and, and waste a ton of time because we can't force Bricksmore to do anything right now.
Well, if Bricksmore says no, we're not interested, then, then, then the project is really, okay, do we want to continue talking with Boulder County Housing Authority and RTD about maybe doing something along the thirty-six, you know, bus route of transit station there? That's adjacent to Bricksmore's property but not on it, it's RTD's property, it's still something that can be done. And frankly, I think would help the marketplace to get just additional people living there, shopping there, you know, put traffic there. So, it's, you know, there's something we can do, but I mean, yeah, obviously, like, it's their property and if they're not interested in rerouting roads.
But, but what we're talking about is signage, trying to giving people a crosswalk that's safe to go, things like that, that I think our town is completely in control of. It's public, it's public space, it's, it's our, you know, we maintain the roads, things like that, you know, making pedestrian crosswalks more visible and safer.
And there are things you could do to make it more attractive. I mean, if you look at some of the trees in that sort of, in the planting areas between the parking lots, they've, they've had any attention for years. I mean, some of this stuff is just cosmetic, as Anthony's saying, but it would be really, I mean, you could actually improve the attractiveness of the marketplace, I think quite a bit just with a few of those sort of, I mean, just look at photographs of the other markets that are in the, in the report to see how much nicer they look just because somebody's gone out and done a little bit of, it's almost like painting the wall of the homes.
I mean, even the narrowing of the streets, I don't know, suggesting if that's right, but if, if we believe what the consultants are saying, those are things that could be, I mean, they're, if we, but, but I agree, if we don't get Bricksmore on board, I mean, I, I don't think we should take any more action until Bricksmore, RTD, Boulder County are on board with moving forward, but then, yes, I think there's some low hanging fruit that, that we ought to.
For everybody.
And I think that's the same for original town, I think there's, I mean, I'm hearing everybody wants ADUs, so when you go through those things, then if you want to give us direction to have staff write up code for ADUs and let's, fine, let's get that, let's get that done. I'm a little nervous about, I mean, I'm not the guy who wants a porch, I'm the one who brought that up because I'm not allowed to put a porch on because, gee, I'm non-conforming because land use code changed, ah, how'd that happen? So, but I'm a little nervous about that because if, if we put something in code to allow that, then I don't know what impact we're going to have on new building, right? And what, and what they're going to be permitted to do because you've let somebody who has a home that was non-conforming, can't have a porch and now all of a sudden we have, can have an attached structure within, inside the code, but we just need to be thoughtful about. And then a lot of the discussion we had was, can we, and I, I thought I heard the consultant that this was doable, is that, is that can we do things differently with existing homeowners in, 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 in existing homes differently than if a developer or, or even somebody new is coming in and building new on, on a piece of property? I thought I heard that, I don't, you know, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, so I, it's probably worth running by our council as well, but that, that one makes me just, I'm kind of nervous. Approving a variance, you know, that, you know, setting some guidelines that say if the homeowner comes along and has to go to the variances board in order to do things, that there's some understood cushion, that, yeah, we're probably going to approve this, we're going to approve that, right? Because nobody wants to spend a bunch of time designing something that won't go through, but changing code there would make me a little nervous until we think about it holistically, right?
Well, we can always approve a variance, I mean, if somebody wants to bring something, if you want to bring an application and say.
You can, it's a question of whether you will, right? See, I was guided originally and it's changed, so this was two years ago, three years ago, I was, yeah, it probably won't go, it's a, it's a, you know.
Well, it's, it's a risk, I mean, it's like any, any, any applicant that's filing something that is not used by right, they're looking for the board to say yay or nay, and there's always a risk that the board says no.
Yeah.
I'd like to offer an opportunity for public comment, is there any objections? Other comment?
Well, then go first, because I'm not happy.
Okay, now's your time. Come on over and maybe come down to, towards the microphone, see.
Oh, I don't have a lot to say, but this is probably at least the fifth, if not the sixth time I have come to make comments about this issue in original town. Blankety, blankety, blank, leave us alone in original town. Leave us alone. You have not heard that before, you have not listened to us before. Now, when that letter was done and sent out, it said original town. The signs that was posted for those meetings said original town. Original town is from Marshall Road to the old railroad track. It is from Fifth Avenue to MacAslin. That is original town on the map for the early nineteen hundreds, if you want to go back further to eighteen ninety-five. Those meetings included other people, so those stats that you have in your packets are not correct. That is not original town residents' desires. Do you understand me and do you hear me? That is not original town. Until you accept that and understand that, you're going to have us angry in original town. I don't want the blankety-blank planning commission, excuse me, standing out in Children's Park deciding what I'm going to do with my empty lot. It is my business what I do with my empty lot. It's been empty since the early nineteen hundreds and by God, it better stay empty as long as I have control of it. It is my decision, not the planning commission's decision. I think as far as an overlay district for residential is absolutely stupid, absolutely stupid. I can understand it doing for commercial and I understand it's the twenty-first century, but not for residential. I don't think that an overlay district is, is right whatsoever. And I think the money that has been spent for this consultant or whatever you have the terminology for is absolutely horrible. A hundred and fifty thousand dollars of taxpayers' money and they can't even follow that original town only residents to talk to us? You're lucky that I'm keeping a dismatch under control, which I am absolute irate.
Yeah, Rick Governor, and I'm pouring the bell, I'm gentleman in the room, probably the white elephant, because I have a party being a lot, so. And my family has even more, so, put, put me in my family, we own quite a few of these vacant properties. And it's been in our family since about nineteen twenty. As I told you once before, my grandfather came here around eighteen fifty. You know, he was a coal miner. My dad was a coal miner, my grandfather, my brother was a coal miner. We're all over to the Gulf of America, you know, and for years, nobody wanted to live in this town, they all moved away. There was nothing here. So, here comes a loan, Scott Carlson in the eighties, and he drives by and he sees this beautiful property out here, okay? Once the period didn't have the water, so he sold it, built, built it to the residents. Oh, he wouldn't give you water. Well, they never got nothing for free, there's nothing for free in this life. But I, I think, you know, most of these old houses in this town, let's face the facts a lot, they're built on railroad ties, they have termites in them. A lot of these houses are going to be tore down anyway in twenty or thirty years, a lot of them. And if you have termites exterminated, I can tell you several people it has in this town, they died about ten years later from the chemicals they pumped in around the outer perimeter of the house. So, you know, I can understand a lot of people don't want change here, but it means to a lot of the older residents, change is there. I don't like what Coal Creek Crossing looks like. I walk out of my house, I used to be able to look, sit on my porch and see the train every morning go to the Moth and Tunnel boat over the mountain, every morning you could see the shiny train. I look now, I see two-story houses, blockout basements, but you know what? That's progress, okay? And the thing is, so, so Maple Street, everybody's bragging about Maple Street, would we rather see the houses there or would we rather see commercial buildings there? I'd rather see the houses there. And, and let's face it, I don't care what you do, this town is going to change a bunch. I mean, you guys can put a trillion overlays in it, but they're still going to come. And, and I think that we ought to just let, sit back, if Bob wants to build a porch on his house, let him build a porch on his house. Pass this on, I think in the code maybe say, yeah, you know, if your house was built in such and such state, nineteen hundred through nineteen fifty or sixty or whatever, say, you could be granted to use a permit to put a porch on your house, no problem. And, and the same thing with these accessory dwellings, that's right. Property taxes in this town are so high that that will help people, okay, be able to put a rental in. And maybe you're going to have to come up with a lot, the ideas of how to police some of that because you don't want twenty-five people living in one and then it won't happen. So, but, you know, I, I, you know, I just sit back and to see all this, I get really frustrated because I have sit here, my whole family, and we starved for years and now we see a chance where we can sell our property and make money. And, and then we see this, want to change here, then it's going to make it worthless. And don't say it isn't, but it's going to, it's going to cause, you know, and, you know, if I can find an individual buyer for each lot when I sell, that's fine with me, they can build a house, I don't care what they do. You know, you can see what happened on William Street, that one with my late brother, his son sold it, his multi-family, they built two-story buildings there because all odds are. all lots are so small. Okay? And so, do I like it? Probably not, but it's there. It's progress. The town has to change. It can't, you know, we can't, because what we're going to develop, what we're going to do here, you're going to put Superior from MacAslin to this site on the bad side of the tracks. Because nobody would want a building or buy an old house and tear it down and redo it. There'll be so many stipulations on it. You know, you've got enough setbacks. You've got five feet on each side, 20 feet, 25 on the back side, 25 on the front. How much more do you want? I mean, look what when Coal Creek come in. Go look at the size of their front yards. Go look at the size between them and that. Look at their backyards, you know? And nowadays, people do not want a small, thin house because there's more than one or two people in it. These are not coal mining days, but you had eight kids in one house with two bedrooms. So, I mean, it's a challenge. And I really think, I never want to see a change. You know, you changed my life when she moved, or he changed my life when he moved. Each and everyone, except for Matt, say that this table has changed, except for Phyllis, has changed my life. Okay? The traffic is crazy. Okay? Try to get out of town now. And you're talking about putting 500 more units, if that's all you're going to do, you're going to drive Costco out of there. And I want you to know what's going to happen. You mark my words, 20 years from today, they'll say, oh, Matt, it's in the table. You're pretty smart. Costco could move right over here to 96th Street and have a full use interchange back in there. Okay? They don't have to fight the traffic here. Get 500 or so people a weekend that can't get in and out of there, what will they do? They will come back. As soon as Costco sees their sales go down, they're going to say, forget it. We're going to relocate somewhere where we get people in and out. And that's what will happen. So, you've got to be real careful. You're double-sided sided a sort because of the way that configuration of Marshall Road is 36th. And I spent that way for 1950, they just put that in there. But you know, I can understand, and I just hope that you really take consideration about this overlay zoning. Because that is basically taking about people's property. So, whether you want to live or not, in a roundabout way, it is. And, okay?
Thank you.
He raised an interesting question. Just wanted to throw one thing in. If you have a consultant, it might be interesting to look at the value of properties with overlay districts compared to the types of neighborhoods that don't have overlay districts. Because I was intrigued to guess, property values with overlay districts that are done properly, the property value is probably higher.
I don't qualify. I didn't move here until 1970, so I'm not an Original Towner. You know, I mean, I grew up here as a little kid and stuff, but I didn't live here. I mean, I lived at my grandma's house. But technically, ours wasn't plotted in 1904, so I know, I mean, Superior has to change. Our, it will become a ghost town. And again, I like change, but makes the world go round, guys. So, just, it's going to happen soon. It's part of life. And I guess when I don't like it that bad, I can move. I go to Montana, Vic, their lives miserable. I don't know. But yeah, you know, I mean, I'd just like to spend all the money on Clarion. I don't think they listen to us. I mean, I come to the meetings and tell them what we want, and tell them what we want, and they come back the next meeting, just hammer it again. Over 30 years, you say, well, if you're going to just keep hammering it, I'll say, okay, okay, I give. I'm tired of hearing it. So, you guys, you know, we've done a pretty good job. Just let us go. We're off to the races. Take a fast horse.
Thanks.
All right. Well, I can confirm the presence of termites in Original Town. I experienced that firsthand. The house that I've been remodeling is truly... All right. Good comments. Additional thoughts?
What's next?
What's next? I think what's next is staff needs to have a conversation about, kind of reflect on what we've said, is kind of some things that we'd like to explore doing, but from a timing and budget.
Yeah, I would just say, if it's, you know, some specific items that we're looking at getting changed, I think staff can work with planning commission to bring something to the board, maybe a little bit of help with Clarion. If it's bigger than a few changes to the code, then we're going to need Clarion's help, you know, from a staff. So, that would be additional cost to the town.
Just so everybody's aware. ADUs seem to be a pretty common theme. I mean, maybe if we just take it in little chunks, and maybe the ADU chunk is one. And I think that fits in nicely to this goal of this affordable housing objective that we've signed on to. And that could be a little piece that we do that helps people with their properties, helps availability of some housing that we were didn't exist. And I'd like to explore that. And I think I heard support.
Yeah, so my perspective around that, I think it would be an interesting idea to pursue. I think to your point, if you could do a couple bite-sized things, you know, if you want to do the ADU. And I have another, you know, looking, it's helpful to be reminded about the Lafayette overlay district that they did a couple years ago. So, theirs really has like six components. You know, if you took it and thought there was a component or two, I don't want to see Clarion back this year. I don't want to see Clarion back again this year. So, for a minute, right? I'm grateful for the work. I don't want to see them back. So, I think Stephen has a tremendous amount of credibility with our, with the rest of the staff, with the board, with the residents of Original Town. If we're not draining too much on Stephen, if we need some potential backfill around Stephen, then I'd be, I'd personally be amenable to helping with the backfill if that was necessary. But I think this needs to be a staff-driven exercise, and I think the ADUs is a good place to start. I also just love the idea of really voluntary programs. So, what's our, Stephen, I'm just going to put you on the spot. I think you probably know. What's our maximum lot coverage now in Original Town?
40%.
So, I would say something, you know, piggybacking something like Original Town saying it's still 40%. But if you agree to 1.5%, 1.5-story construction, new construction, then maybe we'll allow 41.5% or 42.5%. Something like that to try to, some voluntary program to try to get people to not build these monstrous houses. That's not, to me, it's not changing... And I think Mark has really good points. You've got to, and I can already hear Kendra's voice saying there's going to be no bright line on when the, you know, when the property right owner, when the rights of the property owner get changed materially. I think we would all agree that changing a setback from five feet to six feet would probably not do it. But if you went from you could build two-story to 1.5-story, that would be egregious and something that we couldn't do. But if it was a voluntary program to say, hey, if you want to build to a 1.5-story, then we'll be a little flexible as a town and say, okay, maybe we'll do 42.5% lot coverage instead of 40% lot coverage, something like that. So, I think picking a couple things. ADU and lot coverage to me seem like something that would not be a waste of the planning commission's time because I suspect that you'd get some adoption. Once if you start thinking about, you know, if you change the ORM stuff, you know, it's a good brand. Don't start.
So, I'm getting Stephen some help and having this done in-house, I'm 110% on board. I picked out, it's an awesome idea. And not because I don't like Clarion. I like Clarion a lot. But I think he has the skill set to do it, but I don't know that we have the available time, especially with everything going on over there. So, I mean, if we're going to spend money, I'm a big favor of spending money, increasing staff. I'm a proponent of there being a little bit more staff. I think it brings minds into the town that are committed to this town and to our organization. So, I think that's an awesome idea. The affordable housing's come up. I wanted to say this earlier, but I have other people, I have other things to say. Like us to be, and it was brought up as an option for our work plan as well. And let me be careful here, too, because we have ignored affordable housing in this town forever, even when it gets brought up. And I know it's because everybody's just scared shitless, that somehow that's going to bring down the property values of the area. I don't know. But I don't think sticking an affordable housing thing somewhere, and I don't know if that's what you were mentioning over here with RTD, to me, that, I don't think that makes sense. I think putting an affordable program, an affordable housing program into Superior that works with Boulder County Housing Authority, works with us as we have new developments come in, and put some requirements here to get affordable housing throughout the town, not in an area, right? Because we've shown that that doesn't work all that great in town. So, I think affordable housing should be all over. I think we should set a goal for the number of units of affordable housing we want to achieve and work with the county housing authority to figure out how to implement that in town. Because there, I mean, to sit in a meeting and a woman say, you know what, I donated my house to the housing authority because that's where I wanted it to go. Can you imagine? We could donate a beautiful home in Rock Creek to the housing authority, right? And they would maintain it. They would be responsible for it. And all of a sudden, now we can just start having affordable housing throughout and bringing people into the community, not stick them over in a building somewhere. I just want to say, I'm not, I don't like the idea of creating an affordable housing area. So, that's my comment. And then lastly, if we're going to give board direction, I mean, I know you'll, I assume this isn't official direction what we get tonight. I mean, I don't know if you're going to direct staff to go do the ADU thing, but if we're going to be given direction, we were given direction two years ago. And because the board changed and some voices were loud, then the people that gave us the direction left, so therefore the process starts to break down. I'd like the board to think about what that does to your volunteers and to your committees. If you decide something, then you need to get all the board members. If you have a board change, you've got to figure out a way to bring them on board, make it clear that the direction was given, that this is the direction that was given, make them responsible for going up, catching up to where things are, so that we don't have something happen like this again. I'd just ask any of these things that you approve us to do, that there's some process in place that at least lowers the risk that you're going to have a new group of people pop in here and just say, no, I don't like that, so I'm going to vote against it. And I don't know how we do that, but it is demeaning. It is discouraging. I'm borderline wanting to volunteer. You know how upset I am, and I'm sorry it's coming across in this meeting. But just, I just ask that you be thoughtful about that when we go forward.
So, I do want to comment on that. I think it's important, maybe some of the new board members can comment on it. But I think it's a good comment. And I would suggest that the way that you do that, the residents do that, is through voting for board members and asking the hard questions of those board members. Because we cannot, I will tell you, I don't care what previous boards said, right? I'm going to do my job, and I'm going to make a decision. And if I think that a previous board made a decision, my job, I feel like, is to legislate within the guidelines that I'm given. And that's what I'm going to do. And I would never ask any future elected board member to live with a previous board's decision. And I understand your frustration, that you feel like there was a pivot. I do not want the three new board members to feel like they are obliged to somebody else's decision around where we fund dollars or development or consider overlay district. I just, you've got to do that through voting, not through...
They'd probably reconsider when that happens instead of allowing a project that's crossing boards. And I don't care how you do it, but to allow a project to continue across like that and work in dollars, I mean, tax dollars spent that didn't need to have been spent, right? That probably shouldn't have been...
All right, I disagree with that. I think I'm supportive of the...
Then re-vote, you know? Then if there's a project that's running across boards, then take it up. Say, look, we got half the new board here. This project's in play. Let's bring it up and find out if we want to continue it. I mean, it's, you know, we were progressing, right, based on board direction. And if board direction changes, then change it when, you know, when the time comes to get people up to speed. Put the pause on the project. I don't know. You're just going to drive. You're just, you're going to upset. You're just going to upset your volunteers in your face. So, I'm just trying to throw out something to say be thoughtful about how you, you know, how that happens. That's all. Because it's just not, it's just unhealthy. It's...
You know, I mean, but the problem is that you've got a board with seven different individuals who have seven different perspectives on every single thing that comes before the board. You know, sometimes we're in consensus and sometimes we're totally, you know, opposite on how we feel. You know, so, you know, typically, we, you know, we'll reach a decision and then we'll honor the board's decision and get behind it and hope that it is executed well. But, you know, this is, you know, one of the problems that we have with, you know, with the board and how it operates. You know, there are going to be times when, you know, some of us want to go a little slower, other people are, you know, looking to kind of move things along. And it's kind of threading that needle and trying to find a balance. And, you know, every now and then, the board makes mistakes. And I think it's totally appropriate for new board members, I agree with everything Kevin said, for new board members to be their own decision makers and to question previous decisions because sometimes we get things wrong. And sometime, and I want to be questioned. And I don't want to, you know, have like an echo chamber effect where we're just, you know, not looking into, you know, the previous decisions that we've made to see if they were actually the right decisions. And, you know, sometimes we're going to make a decision to spend some money and realize that, you know what, maybe we shouldn't have done that. And, you know, what I certainly don't want to have us do is continue to spend money because we decided to spend money in the past, you know? And then we're not going to be, number one, we should always be really careful about spending taxpayer dollars from the outset. But number two, we should be careful that we're not, you know, digging that hole deeper if it turns out that we were mistaken when we first made that commitment. And so, you know, I hear you and I understand that we need to be, you know, respectful of our volunteers, and we certainly don't want to discourage people. But at the same time, we also need to be respectful of our residents and taxpayers that we're not making, you know, fiscally irresponsible decisions to just continuously throw money at a project that maybe we're not necessarily getting what we need to get out of it. So, you know, it's going to be a nuanced approach as to each decision that's coming before the board. And sometime, we're going to have an election and the board's going to change. And that's healthy as far as I'm concerned. So, you know, I mean, I think we need to be respectful of the volunteers, but at the same time, we also need to respect the voters that they're going to maybe disagree with the decisions that we make and vote us out of office. And then you'll get a whole new crop of electeds to, you know, try to deal with and educate.
But when it's a lack of understanding, then it becomes a problem. A lack of understanding it wasn't. I mean, they're not...
Well, no, no. I mean, with this project, I mean, it started, and, you know, I went back and watched everything from, I remember distinctly in February, you were frustrated because you said that you're hearing four different directions from the board when, right before the contract was actually signed. So, and then that's just the reality of the board. We have lots of different opinions. We're not necessarily having a consensus. So, then when a contract ends up getting, you know, signed, and maybe there's some, you know, dissenting votes, you know, Clinton wasn't at the meeting when the contract got signed. I voted no for that contract. You have, you know, the contractor and planning commission going forward with this contract. And, you know, at that meeting saying, you know, zoning's not on the radar. And again, now we're talking about an overlay district. So, it's like understandable that we can be at this table a year after that decision's made, asking some questions about how did we get here. And I think that that's healthy and appropriate.
Oh, I agree with that.
I think I'd like to jump in here a little bit. It is not the new board that is saying we need to throw this out. So, I don't think it has anything to do with the fact that the new board, the new board is not the issue. The issue is that some of us that are, that were on the board when the decision was made, feel like it got too far down the road before we knew what was going on. And so, I don't happen to be one of those people, but I'm definitely hearing that from my colleagues who were on the board when we made the decision. And so, I think my comment would be is that when, and this is to staff, is when we adopt big projects like this, you need to be the vanguard for us in getting more... in getting more information to the board of a, of a deeper quality so that we don't get to where we've gotten right now. Because maybe if we had more of a discussion about some of these things six months ago, we might have been in a different place. And so I'm just kind of hearing that we, we got too far without knowing what was going on. And so I really charge staff with doing a better job of keeping the board engaged and informed. And, you know, I understand where you're coming from, Lisa, that we get minutes and stuff, but minutes don't, minutes aren't a dialogue where we really can ask questions. And I read the minutes and I read the documents, but, you know, maybe I don't read them as carefully as I could. And I think being across the table from each other and talking about things is, is more effective. So, you know, Steven, Matt, when we, when we go down a big project like this, you know, kind of be our insistence that, hey, we think you should listen more about this and help us be better informed so that we don't get to where we got this time.
Well, typically also, and this is a unique set of circumstances where we, you know, this project came to us because the planning commission was interested in taking this on. And I remember that there was actually kind of like a lull in some of the work that the planning commission was doing. And you guys said that you had some additional capacity to take on a project. It's a very unique set of circumstances where we authorized an expenditure to hire a contractor to work directly with you rather than with the board. And so this was your baby, right, and this was the project. And so that typically doesn't happen, right? We're not hiring contractors to go with ACES and then they're going to change all the lights in town, you know, without us knowing about it. And then, you know, we're going to talk about it a year afterwards and ask them why they use LEDs instead of compact fluorescents. This is a unique project, right? And when you get to planning and, you know, kind of where people live and what traffic's going to look like, this is the stuff that affects people very personally, right? And you're talking about property rights, you're talking about their communities and the roads that they drive every day. So, you know, it's a very personal thing too. And, you know, obviously, it affects people who live in that community extremely differently than the people who don't. So, and I think all of that kind of makes this project very unique. I don't think that we're probably going to encounter anything like this again. But I think, you know, lesson learned for a situation like this where we're going to be spending this kind of money and working with a consultant. I certainly would like to hear more about what's going on regularly. And I agree with Sandy, I don't think minutes necessarily do it. I think a check in with a question and answer period where we can say, okay, what are your plans? What are your thoughts? You know, what does success look like? Answer these kind of big ticket items rather than, you know, a meeting here and that this is, we completed phase one, we've completed phase two. I think in retrospect, probably would be beneficial.
Absolutely, we have the benefit of the power of discussions.
I think that we need to find a way then to have the ability and have an audience with the board. Because it wasn't for lack of us trying to connect with you guys. And we had scheduled several appointments and staff had set those up for us. We had work sessions, we had time during the board meetings. And a lot of those times were either cut short or just taped because of the agenda items that you had at the board. So it wasn't for lack of us trying to check in, it was that we were pushed back or pushed away. So I don't know how we still with that piece of it, because that's, that's my impression of what really happened and why you weren't updated as properly, as frequently as you'd like to be. You know, we were told at one point, yeah, we can get you in to talk with the board, but it's going to not be for six weeks or something like that. And we were at a crucial point, you know, we were processing and where we were at in the evolution of this project, so.
Well, certainly it's not because we want to. I mean, there's, there's just, it's always a balancing act and trying to get everything done. I mean, there's so many hours of our meetings and I think staff does the best they absolutely can. So there's definitely not some intentional pushing you aside. I mean, I always expected this process to be one of exploration and then it was going to come to a point like this where we got to decide directionally where we go. And I don't know that, you know, maybe, maybe it's meeting, maybe it's not meeting some expectations or where some thought we wanted, wanted it to go, and, you know, that's frustrating, I get that. But that's, that's kind of a process where you are not sure of the outcome, is that is one of the possibilities. I'd like to turn, if we could, to the work plan. We do, we do have an outstanding work plan. It'd be nice before we get to, it's summer, to get your work plan approved. Are there thoughts on finalizing the work plan?
I just have kind of a general comment. I know in the code, in the land use code, it talks about planning commission will review and comment on kind of major infrastructure improvements, and that's just not traditionally happening. You know, I know those contracts come to the board, but I'm thinking specifically about, you know, the future of 88th Street. You know, I don't know that, you know, we've never really been asked to review those types of applications and under our code, we're supposed to. So I just kind of, we added that very specifically. I think just for one, to make sure the board knows, hey, we want to do those things. We do feel like that that's, you know, we can add an important level of review on that. So that's just a little bit of background on that why that's added. And then maybe a little clarification from staff is like, what qualifies as far as like what types of capital improvements? Is there a threshold, like, for what planning commission should review and, you know, how does that work or how do those decisions remain?
Yeah, I mean, the only comment I would make is I don't know why 88th Street was particularly, I don't remember the conversation. So, I mean, I, I don't have any heartburn one way or the other with the planning commission being involved with that. I mean, so I don't know, I mean, I see it's marked out, but I don't know why.
Well, I think it's because we're not going to see it.
You know, other than, yeah, if that's what it was.
Right, so like there's no, there's nothing to review.
Yeah, if that's all it is, that it was taken off because we're not doing it.
That's my understanding, yeah. I mean, if you'd like us to develop some, you know, kind of pre-work to, you know, to kind of inform the plan, I think that would be another level of review that I personally would be interested. I'm not, I don't know if the other planning commission members are, but that's why it was removed.
88th is going to be such an important, you know, it's such a critical artery in town. So I want planning commission, absolutely, to look at it, to give us your thoughts, absolutely. I guess right now we're looking at, I think we pushed it in the capital improvement plan until 2020. We don't know yet what Zaharias and how that's going to all kind of work into the whole deal. But you're going to review the Zaharias plan when that's ready for review. And I think 88th is going to be a component of that whole process. And I think the discussion that we had when we were talking about budgeting was just, it didn't make sense to go down the 88th route before Zaharias because we didn't want the construction to start and then have everything get torn up with construction vehicles.
So item number three stays in there, it's review and comment on major capital improvement projects. I don't know that we need to.
We don't need to be specific.
We don't need the language.
Where was the new park going to be, just curious?
That's where we've been, I'm assuming, I suppose.
And if that comes to us as an FDP, I mean, I know that's kind of under the parks per view, which is probably the appropriate place. But if it needs an FDP, you know, we look at it through that.
I think the threshold piece you mentioned just defines whatever, whatever defines a, a major capital improvement. Just define that and then you guys hit whatever.
Right, whatever those are, is that a budget number, is that a scope, is that an impact to neighborhoods? Like, how do we determine when we should be looking at those?
I mean, just for, in light of the discussion, the non-decision, just for, do we remove the strikeout here so that, you know, based on staff's capabilities with respect to a potential low-hanging fruit with code changes and consent around a potential overlay district, does that get included there or do we just wait to see what staff's capable of doing?
And I'd like to see it stay, so it doesn't die and never know. It could be a rollover item, it could be something that, you know, just doesn't ever rise to the level of showing up on our agenda. But I'd prefer to carry it forward.
Speaking as one of seven, I would like to take away the strikeout, I think that would be suited as well.
I guess my, I'm fine with that. I would add for like a potential, right now it's like a, as if it's a, as if it's a done deal that there's going to be an overlay. So, you know, I would say, potential land use, you know, potential land use code amendments related to Northwest Superior planning recommendations. And maybe just strike this.
Yeah, just stop there.
Just say, you know, potential land use code amendments related to the Superior, yeah, Northwest Superior Plan.
Also, also being one of seven, the new guy here, you know, one of the things when I look at number eight, it's always just kind of irked me. We just never think about pedestrians. We always think about cars and traffic flow and then we're sort of after the fact, like, wait, how do we cross the street?
Yeah, that sucks.
I just would love to see more proactive thinking around human flow. I know we say multimodal, but again, that's usually vehicular, automobile or bicycle of some sort. Pedestrians are usually like an after the fact. I nearly got run over today in Greenwood Village, so it's just something in front of me again. So I just, you know, I don't know how you include that other than review pedestrian and traffic flow. But whatever you guys can think of, just keep that at the forefront.
Absolutely, and I guess a little bit of that comes in, you know, before we get all the way. And I'm using the 88th Street as an example because that's kind of the next imminent, probably major project. It could apply to lots of different projects. But what I personally think would be helpful is before we get to, hey, here's our 100% design town board, here's your budget contract. No, why don't we want that section to look like? Do we want bike lanes? Do we need a wider sidewalk, right? That's where that community engagement comes in. And I know we just hired, you know, Carlos and his team to help do that. And I would, I would much rather before we get all the way to 100% design and here's your budget, that we evaluate those things, you know, and then that provides guidance into the development of those plans. So, because you're right, I do think we focus a lot sometimes, that's the easy thing to focus on, is traffic. But what are the trade-offs, right? We're not always thinking about trade-offs. You make the road wider, well, now you can't cross it, you know? So is that really, is that the outcome we're looking for?
No, I think that's smart and also, you know, with 88th, you know, given that we've got Louisville on the other side of the bridge. And there was talk at one point about, you know, maybe working with Louisville to widen the bridge, maybe not. I don't know if they're, they're interested anymore. And then obviously, there's so much traffic that's going to the school. So talking with BBSD, you know, I mean, I would love to make it safer and more accessible for kids who are walking or riding their bikes. And, you know, so it's designed with all of that in mind. In addition to, you know, dealing with the traffic concerns of everybody that's driving into Monarch and, you know, in the morning and in the afternoon when they're trying to pick people up.
And now that looks cool.
We're kind of, so.
Switching to my, I have an hour.
We're kind of on the hook.
Yeah, with development application that's in process, the planning commission's going to see.
That's true, so where's the budget on that?
You're going to have a chance to give input on 88th even before you see final designs for 88th because you have to weigh in on that application.
That's great.
So keep that in mind.
Well, we have some commitments we have to do related to 88th because of the fact that we're taking tip regional, sub-regional money that is related to the sidewalk.
Which project funded? Did we get project funded?
We got basically a US 36 bikeway extension that's going to go up 36 and then go through Arthur Park. We got a million forty-five for it.
Oh, I didn't think that.
And so we are going to be obligated to do some sidewalk improvements along 88th in order to make that connection.
That's great.
I mean, it hasn't finally been approved, it got through last night. So we will be doing that to increase that connectivity with Springfield.
One piece I had a concern about with, as far as the like check-in process along the way.
Yeah.
I'll be careful about how much we do. I just don't want to get too far into micromanaging staff and how we slow things down. I mean, clearly this is an important piece, getting the community feedback, making sure we're incorporating everything. I don't know if it's a one-time check-in or two-time check-in. I'd like to see that discussed a little bit more.
Totally agree, sometimes we can overplan, we can make things a little complicated. Right, but I do think it's frustrating from, as, from a resident perspective, you know, to have a plan at 100% design that maybe doesn't accommodate something that they really feel strongly about. And then it really just kind of derails projects in manners. Like when we look at, you know, kind of historic, I agree, I don't want to overcomplicate it or drag things on for years. But I do think targeted kind of public input early.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about the exact opposite side of the spectrum where you get a public feedback session and you hear a lot of things, we try to address that, come back in again, try to say, all right, we fixed things, let's address it again. However many that occurs and that will, two to three months. Exactly. So we don't end up over complicating the process.
Nobody wants that, I think, yeah.
Okay, so anything else for the work plan? So number six.
Number six was initiate actions we have to, expecting for the town initiated actions. It's related to the marketplace.
Yeah.
Well, the other, like.
Yeah, kind of the other half.
So in my mind, that's something that maybe stays as a, like, don't lose this, but what do you guys, what do we do right now?
We can, at this point, some of the staff and board teams probably need to focus on.
I mean, maybe something that says continue to be engaged in the marketplace rehab or whatever we call it, but, you know.
So I guess with six, I mean, they said that the first one that struck through is, you know, implement the summary of recommendations by developing the overlay district. So I think that that, that's premature right now. And, you know, I still want to have guidance from council about kind of the full litany of things that can be done from code amendments to, you know, designing an overlay district. So I'm fine inserting something kind of related to Northwest Subarea Planning but kind of that's dependent upon us having like a discussion after we understand what can and cannot be done before, you know, any. But I wouldn't want to strike it altogether, I guess is my point.
What if the bullets were just struck? I mean, there's action items that were discussed tonight, but the meat of it is still there for them to follow up on what we discussed earlier. Is that not supposed, are there like more specificity?
I think it's good to keep it in there because then we don't forget about it. Six months from now, we're just going to look at it.
You're talking about the sub-bullets or the six?
Yeah, I mean, if it's something that's softening, it's review possible recommendations. Proposed recommendations.
Well, I think the board probably needs to give direction after we understand, number one, what we can do. And then, number two, what the recommendations are in light of what we can do. So maybe it's implement recommendations for original town as directed by board. And that will be, whenever that happens, when we talk to council and then we have better guidance, we can have further. We could set an agenda to follow up with this once we have.
I'm not sure they're just on the back end of that, right? And it's, I mean, this period of collaboration, you know, if you say implement action items that the board directs, that's not, it's kind of the opposite of why we want committees, my view. So I'm just going to be a little careful there.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my, my thought with number six is, so we're talking about the sub-area planning here, right, and action items. And I think everybody was on board with the marketplace recommendations that, you know, we need to have this kind of greater discussion with Bricksmore and all that and figure out what the buy-in is, and then we can implement some recommendations that we can do on our own. And then we can implement some recommendations that we can do if we have Bricksmore's buy-in. And then with original town, we seem to say like, okay, it's premature to be going down the path of developing an overlay district. We need to understand what council's recommendations are in terms of what we can do. I think as part of that, I'd like to understand what has been done by Lafayette. Like, I'm not familiar with the overlay district that Lafayette actually adopted, so I'd like to know what exactly their experience has been. And then, once we understand kind of what the options are, then we can kind of reevaluate about, okay, these are the things that we're interested in and these are the things that we're not.
Why don't we just say re-engage with, with board after completion of council's review of the district?
Or just continue to collaborate with the board around.
Or, or just continue to collaborate with the board around.
Collaborate with the board.
Something.
There, there we have a bullet point and it's something to remind us, oh yeah, we got to do that.
Yeah, I'm good with continuing collaboration with them. Anything else? I've got something on the last one.
So the last one, 10, um, I don't think we want you to create diverse diversity in housing options. I think this sub-bullet is the correct thing. Explore affordable housing opportunities through partnerships, existing organizations, as well as paying attention to the annual house. But create diversity in housing options, including retaining housing options. First, the English is weird. Second, I don't think we really want you to get out there and create, you're not.
I'm not building it.
Right. You're not, you're not building anything. So this, so the sub-bullet seems cool. So.
Can I go back to number seven? Do we have comprehensive plan? When is our next update coming? I think when we, we wanted to kind of take a look at the comprehensive plan, maybe start to think about it ahead of time. Is that something we're budgeting in 2020 to happen in 2021?
Targeted plan.
We just talked about it.
Yeah, we just talked about it on Monday.
And so I think it'll be part of the discussion as part of the budget, so the planning commission should.
I think consensus that we want to bring it up to 19, I mean, to, to, to budget for next year.
So budget to do it in 2020. So we should kind of re-coin ourselves with that ideally and.
It's a targeted update, that's probably.
Instead of the whole documented sections of it or areas where we feel like it is, what?
You'll provide guidances to the, to the areas you want to.
Yeah, I think that's going to be, we're.
We'll be waiting on you.
There, there are consultants that have to make some happen. We'll be ready to. So, but yeah, I mean, that's going to be a lot of work.
But I mean, if there are specific areas that you know of that you would like us to look at, I mean, I think we're open to say it.
Can we inform what targeted areas we're looking at? Is that something that we get to?
I don't think we've discussed it to that level.
We haven't really talked about it. It's like, but, you know, if you're concerned, your assistant is like everybody else.
It's a blank initiative. But every, I, I mean, I think that's sort of the job, right? Every, all of us need to be familiar with the document. And so if, yeah.
Still some opportunities there.
I've got questions about number nine. Maybe it just needs a little more detail. Actively engage in regional planning with adjacent jurisdictions. What planning, just a little bit, what does it mean?
I mean, I think what we envision there is, you know, maybe potentially meet with another planning commission or some of the other groups and just talk about maybe what's working for their communities, just some of the tools or strategies, learn more about what's going on in the region. You know, we'd have to rely on, you know, some staff time schedule and coordinate that. And that can be challenging with schedules.
We haven't done it while at least we've had some communication before it's done.
But, you know, I definitely think there's some value with Louisville because we share a lot of roads and moving back and forth between our communities. And I, I would not want to be the person trying to coordinate meetings between our nine planning commissioners and their nine planning commissioners. But I think there's definitely some value in having the conversations with Louisville. Because when we had the joint issues meeting, you know, we learned a lot about, Neil and I did, about their transportation plan, which is, you know, a very dynamic, great document. And I think they're thinking some of the concerns that we have about the CAS and about 88th. And so there are absolutely some ways that we can communicate between the two jurisdictions. So those two in particular, I think.
And the staffs are communicating on those particular things, but from a planning commission perspective.
Yeah. I, I'm not opposed to that, but I wouldn't want to be the one trying to get all of you in the same room.
Maybe it's a subset too. Maybe you don't try to get everybody together. Maybe you get the chair and this one.
Yeah. Yeah. Or whoever could do it. I mean.
Kind of whoever's available or anything.
Yeah.
Are there any other communities that you feel like would be worth us chatting with? Or is Louisville County apartment?
Although, yeah.
I was going to say unless you.
You share a longer board than Broomfield.
I was going to say unless you get Broomfield, you know.
Well, I don't know. I mean, I think they're kind of interested in Lafayette, given.
It may be interesting related to like their overlay.
Because of their overlay district, yeah.
Because of their original town.
Yeah, they're, I mean, I think that's a good point. There could be some real value there.
Why they did that, kind of lessons learned.
Yeah.
I also think just from. People used to, you know, when you talk about affordable housing, the older counties' affordable housing solution used to be Lafayette. Which is not the, it's not the case anymore, right? And so I, I think engaging, I, I think we have a lot in common with Lafayette. So, and we have, you know, all our neighbors, but from my perspective.
I think that would be a good, I think personally, I don't know much about their overlay and kind of the reasons they did it and how, how it happened. And I think that could really help us understand maybe some of the challenges and pitfalls and landmines that they already went into.
That's a great idea.
We should avoid it.
Probably staff that are too.
Yeah, true.
Right. Saves a bunch of money, please.
Great. Is there anything? I have one more. Uh, just want to make sure expectations were the same on this one. Number three, uh, when we get to review and comment or recommend approval on major capital improvement projects, I mean, this last piece and budget. Does that mean you guys are looking to be a part of the budget process or what is?
I think it means more, my thought is maybe pertains to scope of projects, you know, not necessarily to get in there, but just to make sure. I think we're on the same page with the scope of the project.
Okay. Do you want to change it to scope or?
Maybe scope's a better word than budget.
I like that change.
Okay. So just, just for clarification, so we're doing Colton this year. Is that then going to go to planning commission for their recommendation before, or are you authorized?
It's a million overlay.
Like if you're adding bike lanes or you're changing lane width, maybe.
No changes to the width of the road or anything like that. But I, I mean, we.
Well, I guess I didn't, my, my question is what's a major?
I know. That's kind of where I was like, what is, what constitutes?
So we could leave it when there was discussion a year ago, two years ago about when to include like the committees in review processes for develop FTPs and that sort of thing. I think we said at staff's discretion, bring in.
I think a new park, a new roundabout, um, you know, the Cold Creek improvements, I think. The planning commission saw the parts wanted to develop FTPs to. So those type of large scale CIP projects is what I had in mind. What are the maintenance?
Could we change it slightly just to advise the planning commission on capital improvement projects so that we can discuss what is appropriate for us to comment?
I think so, right? I think I'm curious about, you know, if it doesn't need an FTP.
I mean, if we've got a headworks project at the Wasteland.
No, we're probably not there.
That's going to be like a $4 million or five, that sounds like.
I think so. Yeah. I think that's, it's quite, there's probably no one size fits all answer.
Yeah. So we can do that. We can share a list of the capital improvement projects at the beginning of each year.
That'd be great. A little presentation of the budget.
And then the PC can say, hey, you know, we'd like to.
This comes up.
See this or.
Perfect.
We're happy to do that. So.
Thanks for a really great discussion. I felt like we made some progress tonight. So.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your work on this and please that we can do some good direction for it. All right. Thanks everyone.
So there could be half an hour hard. So Louisville, that was BVSD like two weeks ago.
Yeah, we brought this up at the joint issues meeting. Everybody agrees with what they're.
I didn't have the right people in the room, but.